Good evening. It is my pleasure to welcome you to the Lexington County School District Three Board of Trustees Regular Monthly Meeting. It is Tuesday, November the 11th, 2025, six o'clock. We are meeting in the Staff Development Room of the Lexington Three District Office. All board members are present except Dr. Gunner. I welcome you all and thank you for attending. At this time, I call our meeting to order. I would like to recognize two students who attend Batesburg-Leesville High School. Garrett Barr, Batesburg-Leesville High School JROTC Cadet, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Callie Watson, Batesburg-Leesville High School Student Body President, will lead us in prayer. Please stand.
Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as one.
Good evening. I'd like to ask everyone to close their eyes and bow their heads. Dear Heavenly Father, I'd like to thank you for allowing everyone to get here safely tonight and to be here. I'd like to ask that you guide the board members' hearts and minds into making the decisions that are best in the interests of the students and staff in this district. I'd also like to ask you to guide everyone and allow them to return home safely tonight. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen. We appreciate your participation in our meeting. Thank you very much. At this point, we are on item 1.4, Approval of the Agenda. You receive the agenda in your packet. Without objection, we will approve the agenda as presented. The agenda is approved. Item 1.5, Approval of the Minutes for October 14th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting. These minutes were also in your packet. Without objection, we will approve the minutes as presented. The minutes for the October 14th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting are approved. We will move on to 2.0, Recognition. Item 2.1, Recognition of Students Who Earned Perfect Scores on 2024 through 2025 End-of-Course Testing, Presented by Dr. Bryant and Mrs. Taylor. And it is such an honor to see all of you here this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow Board of Trustees members. We are excited to be here this evening to recognize our students who earned perfect scores on the SC Ready Assessment and End-of-Course Exams. We're going to start with our SC Ready Perfect Scores. The South Carolina College and Career Ready Assessments, or SC Ready as we call it, is a statewide assessment in English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies administered to students in grades three through eight as required by the Education Accountability Act. For the 2024-2025 school year, we had two students earn perfect scores on the math test while they were eighth graders at Batesburg-Leesville Middle School. So students, when I call your name, and Mr. McGinty is going to help pass out our signs, if you would, please come up to the front and you can accept your yard sign. We have Jason Filial and Sally Paradise. Let's give them a round of applause. And we're going to move on to our perfect end-of-course scores. End-of-course exams in South Carolina are standardized tests given at the high school level to assess students' mastery of specific subjects, including Algebra I, Biology I, English II, and US History. These exams serve as a key measure of student learning and account for 20% of a student's final grade in each respective course. EOC exams are intended to ensure consistency and academic rigor across the state and help evaluate both individual student performance and overall school effectiveness in core subject areas. And tonight, we are recognizing 15 students for perfect EOC scores during the 24-25 school year. So students, when I call your name, if you would, please come up front to accept your yard sign and please remain up front until the end so we can take a group picture. We are recognizing tonight Lexi Davis for a perfect score in Biology and English II, Zane Davis in Biology, William Derrick in Algebra I, Jason Filial in Algebra I, Zach Hall in Biology, students, if y'all stay up front for me, Melody Enfinger in English II, Cameron Kirkland in US History, Justice Mobley Sawyer in Biology, Sally Paradise in Algebra I, Catherine Payanatilbera in English II, Zoe Phillips in Algebra I, Grayson Prince in Biology, Kate Shealy in Biology and English II, Bishop Sims in Biology, and Mario Waters in English II. Let's give all of our students a round of applause. Face, turn your bodies a little bit this way and squeeze in together. I think I can see everybody here. And we're going to take a few on three, one, there we go, one, two, three. Hold on, stay right there, please, one, two, three. Congratulations, thank you guys again. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations to each of you. We are very proud of you. Also, thank you to Mrs. Taylor. Next on the agenda is item 2.2, Recognition of Teachers Receiving Strategic Compensation Grants from the South Carolina State Department of Education, presented by Dr. Bryant and Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board of Trustees. This is a very exciting night in the life of Lexington School District Three, and it is my distinct honor to share with you about the grant that the district applied for with the State Department in March of 2025. The Strategic Compensation Pilot Program is a competitive initiative aiming to financially reward English Language Arts teachers and mathematics teachers in public school districts and charter schools whose students demonstrate significant academic growth throughout the school year. In this round of the pilot program, approximately $5 million in total funding was available statewide and distributed on a competitive basis. Lexington Three's awards were determined by spring-to-spring student growth as measured by the SC Ready Assessment that we just saw students awarded for. And the pilot program serves as an important component of the SCDE's broader strategy to strengthen educator recruitment and retention across South Carolina. The English Language Arts teachers who are being recognized tonight were based on a four, excuse me, on a six-point scale. Teachers receiving an award scored a 3.0 or above on the growth metric, and the award amounts are proportional to both the magnitude of growth and the number of students rostered with at or above average growth. Mathematics teachers receiving an award scored a 4.0 or above on the growth, excuse me, a 14.0 or above on the growth metric, and those awards are also proportional to both the magnitude of growth and the number of students rostered with at or above average growth. Now is the time I know our teachers have been waiting on. They've received an ominous email last week and have been pretty much left in the dark since then. Mrs. Taylor is going to be here with a check denoting the amount each teacher earned based on the growth of their students. As I call each teacher up, please remain up front so that Ms. Taylor can get a photo with the entire group. Congratulations to the following teachers. I'm going to name the teacher, the teacher's discipline he or she teaches, and the award amount for their student growth. Unfortunately, our first one is not here, and I told him, while we will miss him, we are certainly glad that the Panthers are still playing football and he had to go to practice. So, go Panthers. Brian Cottney, ELA teacher, received $2,500. Morgan Deal, Ms. Deal is an ELA teacher, she's receiving $2,870. Ashley Dykes, Ms. Dykes is a math teacher, receiving $3,240. We have Ms. Frick, Ms. Carrie Frick. She retired from our district last year, so she is a retired math teacher, so she's the real winner tonight. And she's receiving $3,610. Mr. Samuel Kokoski, better known as Mr. K, is an ELA teacher, and he is in Social Studies. Excuse me, Mr. Kokoski. But he's getting this money for ELA. So we might be careful. All right, Mr. K is an ELA teacher and Social Studies teacher, receiving $6,480. We have Mrs. Adina McCullough. Ms. McCullough is an ELA teacher, and she is receiving $14,440. We have Ms. Courtney Engel, who is also an ELA teacher. Ms. Engel is receiving $25,920. And unfortunately, Ms. Rhonda Rose was not able to be with us tonight. She is a math teacher at BLMS, and she is also receiving $25,920. Please help me congratulate these teachers. With the, with the absence, with the absence of Coach Cottney and Mrs. Rose, we have a combined total of bonus money of $84,980 for your hard work. Thank you, we are so proud of you. And the good news is, the pilot program is a two-year program, and knowing how hard our teachers are working to grow their students, we look forward to seeing the amount of money our teachers will be awarded next year. Again, Lexington Three could not be more proud. Thank you for what you're doing for our students. One more time.
Congratulations to you. We appreciate your hard work and all you do for our students. Thank you, Dr. Bryant and Mrs. Taylor. We will move on to 3.0, Consent. Item 3.1, Financial Report by Mrs. Roden.
Hello, good evening. Your October statements were in your packet. You'll see that we received some federal money in our reimbursements, but that is carryforward amounts from fiscal year '25 grants that we have. We have written our '26 federal program grants, and we've gotten amounts for them, but since the government shut down, we cannot claim on those at this time. So that is carryforward money that you're seeing on your statement. And you see, we didn't get money for ROTC last month because the federal government is shut down. And the two, we got one for Healthy Meals Incentives and the COPHES grant that closed out the funds for those two grants for the duration of the grants. So we've received all those monies and closed those out. Do you have any questions about the financials? If not, I also want to mention that due to the government shutdown, we will not be able to submit our audit to the State Department by December 1st. Well, we will be submitting it, but it won't be just in draft version. The federal government has not released the final version of the compliance supplement for the single audit portion. And so, until they, they gave us a draft, so we've done the audit and complied with what the draft says, but we can't issue the final until they actually open back up and issue their final. So if we have to change anything in our current audit, we would do so. But the numbers are good and firm, so we're not going to have the auditors come next month and present to you like we usually do since it's not technically final. But we will be submitting it to the State Department along with the other forms that are due at that time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Roden. Next, item 3.2, Superintendent's Report by Dr. Atkinson.
Thank you. This past Saturday, our girls' strength and conditioning team became the first female team in what we've had in our history to win a state championship, and they won that at the South Carolina High School Strength Coaches State Strength Meet that was held this past Saturday at Lexington High School. And leading our team was Jada Henson and Kira Frye, and they competed with over 350 girls representing over 40 schools, and all the classes were together, 1A through 5A Division One and Division Two, with Kira placing at the top, at fourth place of all the girls in all the divisions. So we're very proud of them and the work that they have done. And we are co-champions with Chesney High School, so that is our first state championship for a female team at Batesburg-Leesville High School. Our high school band finished another successful marching season. They were the 1A lower state champions for the third consecutive year, and they placed fourth in the 1A state championship on Saturday, November 1st, at North Central High School, moving up one spot from last year. Our Panther Players Production Bright Star was held last weekend, and I want to congratulate our Panther players for all their hard work and for another outstanding performance. We're very proud of the work that they and their sponsors have done in making this performance one that we all will remember. Our elementary school production of The Little Mermaid has been cast, so mark your calendars for Saturday, March 21st. We'll have two showtimes at 11:00 and 5:00 p.m., so we're looking for another great performance from our students. South Carolina teacher Cory Beatbo visited the high school on Monday, October 20th. He is working with the State Department of Education for a project called the South Carolina Department of Education's Palmetto Civics Project, honoring South Carolina pioneers of historical significance. So he's been going around to different schools unveiling different posters detailing someone that has made a significant impact in the history of South Carolina. And he was visiting our social studies classes, and he was in Mr. Barry Thomas's dual enrollment History 201 class. At the, at the conclusion, there's a, there's a new poster unveiled every month. Every school that he visits, we get a complete poster set, which is worth about $1,000. So we were, we were happy that we were chosen for one of the visits. I don't know if we had some inside connection there, but it worked out fine. I was able to participate in the groundbreaking for Piedmont Technical College's new Saluda County Center for Manufacturing Excellence. We have been referring to this as the Regional Career Center, so it will be on the, on the Piedmont Technical campus at Saluda County. This will be a $14.3 million facility spanning 22,635 square feet. Again, it will be on the Saluda campus of Piedmont Technical College. The facility will serve our high school, Batesburg-Leesville High School, Saluda High School, and also Ridge Spring Minetta High School. And we know we already have, you know, a beautiful CTE building, but the purpose of this Regional Career Center is to be able to offer programs that are too expensive for one high school, to be able, a small high school to fund. So our students will get expanded opportunities for career technological education courses and programs at this facility. It's also expected to boost economic growth by attracting new industries and strengthening the region's skilled workforce. The plans or the anticipated grand opening will be in early 2027. Again, I have called out Senator Shane Massey before and want to make sure that we thank him because he worked for several years to secure the $14.3 million funding to be able to give this opportunity for our three high schools. Over the last week, our schools have hosted some very outstanding Veterans Day programs. The middle school was last Wednesday, the primary school was yesterday, and the high school was actually this morning. So we still have one to go. The elementary school will be having their veterans program this Thursday, the 13th, at 6:30 p.m. in the Fine Arts Center, looking forward to that, that remembrance as well. Some other notable events I just want to highlight that have occurred in the last month. The primary school, the elementary school, and the, in the middle school celebrated Ribbon Week, the week of October 27th to the 31st. And as we know, Ribbon Week is the oldest and largest drug prevention program in the nation. Katie Witt, football player, was just recently selected to play in the '76 Annual Touchdown, Touchstone Energy Bowl, which used to be called the North-South All-Star Game, will be on December the 13th, and we're excited that he will be representing our school in, in this honor. Our high school competition cheer team finished third at the Chapin High School Cheer Competition on October the 25th, and the team will be competing in the double A state championship qualifier competition this Saturday at Lexington High School. Our girls' tennis team captured the region championship with a perfect 8-0 region record on October the 15th. So congratulations to our girls' tennis team and also for advancing to the second round of the state playoffs. On the same, same line, same note, our high school girls' volleyball team competed, completed their season, finishing second in their region and advancing also to the second round of the playoffs. Our middle school celebrated 94 student athletes who participated in fall athletics on October the 28th. They have, at the seventh and eighth grade, we know sixth graders aren't eligible yet, they're not allowed to participate in athletics, but 31% of the seventh and eighth grade student body participated in some type of athletic competition this, this fall. So that's almost a third of our student body are participating in athletics. Our high school at college fair was held on October the 29th. We had representatives from various colleges and tech schools throughout South Carolina to share information with our juniors and seniors about their college options. Our high school Panther Choir attended the South Carolina Music Educators Association Regional Choir at Newberry College on April the 28th. We're always excited and happy and proud of our choir, anytime they can participate in an event, and they represent us well. Our middle school and high school have been competing for a food drive for the last week, seeing which school could collect and donate the most canned food, food items to help fight hunger in our community. And so far, they have collected over 3,000 food items, and they will be, continue this until November the 18th. And last, I'm, it's not even news to anyone, but the last event that upcoming will be this Friday. Our football team will be playing in the second round at Chester High School. And that's all the items I have for this month. Lots of great things happened since the last board meeting.
Yes, it is. Thank you so much, Dr. Atkinson. Next, 4.0, Public Participation. Mrs. Derrick, do we have any other cards? Thank you. This portion of the agenda encourages participation by citizens in our community. Participants may speak for five minutes or less on school, district operations, school programs, or school, district matters of concern. Participants may only address those matters that are directly school, district-related. In this public forum, the board will not hear comments on specific personnel, nor will the board take any action on topics discussed. Open discussion with the board is not permitted in the public participation portion of the agenda. To be recognized for public participation, interested persons should complete a request card prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available at the meeting site. This evening, we have one card from Amanda Driggers, a parent.
I'm Amanda Driggers. I have three children that are in District Three. I was just informed recently that there have been some changes with the groupings of the students and placement of classrooms. So, and I've of classrooms. So, and I've found that grouping the students by similar I-ready scores can enhance like their instructional efficacy, and it also requires or allows for balanced safeguards, especially with students who have IEPs and 504 plans. So grouping students with similar diagnostic profiles allows teachers to deliver targeted instruction aligned to share skill gaps, which helps with their vocabulary and math. A lot of times, this focus does approach and minimize the need for like deeper engagement, and it allows the teachers to be able to focus on those specific needs for the children. However, grouping does raise some concerns as far as equity goes. Students who are placed in lower groups may receive less rigorous instruction, which can hinder academic growth and lower self-esteem. Teachers may unintentionally set lower expectations reinforcing achievement gaps. These groups can also limit peer learning and social integration as students are isolated from diverse perspectives and role models. Without frequent reassessment, and students may remain in lower groups, creating a cycle of underachievement and restricted access to future opportunities. To promote equity, educators should use to, for multiple different resources, so not just I-ready scores and SE-ready, you know, as far as allowing classroom grades and different things to be able to also allow the student to, you know, as far as placement in other classrooms and, you know, decide whether that student needs to be in the appropriate place, I think is really important. All groups must receive high-quality instruction and access to grade-level content, which no issues there with District 3. When students with IEPs and 504 plans are included in grouped instruction, teachers must be equipped with resources and strategies to meet diverse needs. This includes access to evidence-based intervention banks, clear guidance on accommodations, and collaborative support from special education teachers and staff. Teachers benefit from tools that help them chunk content, offer alternative response formats, and adjusting pace, adjust pacing. Professional development and coaching ensure that they implement these individualized supports while maintaining the group cohesiveness. I think that's important. That's a concern that I've kind of been tossed up with recently with some of my children. My other part to this is as far as psychological evaluation for some of the children who really do need evaluation sooner than later, I think getting them, you know, assessed at an early rate is really important to help not only the teachers to help with the placement of these children, but also just as a classroom in general.
Next on the agenda is 5.0 Information Items. Item 5.1 Assessment and Accountability Update by Mr. Potts.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Atkinson, and members of the board. Tonight, we finally get to share with you our report card ratings for 2025. We'll look at how each school performed. We're going to see how, what goes into the ratings, and we're going to try to focus on growth over the last year and what that's looked like. So by the end of the presentation, I hope you have a clear picture of where we're moving forward, where we've seen steady gains, and how we're preparing our students to succeed in the future. Each level, elementary school, middle school, and high school, has a mix of measures that contribute to the overall report card rating. For elementary and middle schools, the primary metric is the SE-ready performance and the student progress from SE-ready are the biggest factors, while at the high school, the end-of-course exam, graduation rate, college and career readiness play a large role into high school ratings. The overall ratings of the categories are similar to prior years. There hasn't been much of adjustment. In 4th and 6th grade, science has been added for this year, and so we're seeing a small reduction in what the academic achievement was for those. And also at the high school, we're noticing some small changes with student, with the high school progress, that we have more cohorts that they're measuring. But for the most part, it looks very similar to what it would look like last year. We have a lot to celebrate in our schools. The green shading on the chart helps to show areas where we've gained ground compared to last year, where the actual level of performance in the sub-rating is a higher rating than it was from the year before. So we continue to see upward momentum in student progress at BLEs and BLMS. Student progress based on SE-ready performance, both of those schools receiving a sub-rating of excellent. We've also seen school climate impacts at both of those schools, too, where they're increasing the rating of the school climate. Academic achievement at the elementary school is improved from last year. The graduation rate, CCR isn't posted, but both of those have had metric goals. And although we see two of the ML progresses for BLEs and BLMS have higher ratings than they did last year, all of our schools had more students that were exiting out on the access for ELLS tests than the year before. In fact, we had more students exit out last year than we did the three years prior. So we're seeing a lot more students that are exiting out in terms of our multilingual learners. So we've had a lot of change and a lot of improvements that are underlying some of the data within our schools. Just to give you an idea of how much change we've seen just year to year, these are the last two years at the elementary, middle school, and the high school. And the point-change difference between those two years, and, you know, right away, you're going to see at the elementary school, we had a huge boost in performance based upon some of those metrics that we just saw. Even at the high school, it might look like a small impact, but the high school has had an increase in performance for the last three years, going from 53 to 55 and to 57, and they're falling just short of that good category in 2025. I also, maybe I should also share that the high school had the highest graduation rate last year that I could find on record. It was almost nearly 92%. And also, of the 140 students who were in the graduating cohort, 123 of those graduated college and career readiness, or college and career ready. That's 88% of our graduates are graduating college and career ready. That's fantastic. That's, I mean, that metric hasn't been around that long, but I am certain that that's the highest that it has been. Just to give you an idea of what those overall ratings have looked like over the last couple of years, we see we're still operating at really the highest ratings that we have seen overall within the district. Again, 92% graduation rate with nine out of 10 students graduating college and career ready. This shows that our students aren't just finishing high school. We're preparing them with the skills that are necessary after they graduate. So really, in short, I just want to share the 2025 report card reflects steady growth across the district, and it shows some of those changes over the last couple of years. We've seen measurable improvements in key areas and meaningful progress for our students. I wanted to keep it short this year. Do you have any additional questions that you have for me based upon the report card?
I'm glad to hear about the graduation rate. That's wonderful.
That's fantastic.
Any questions?
I want to add one thing. It was in the paper today as well, that we would only, District Lexington County not to have a school below average. What was that?
That's great.
That's great.
And SE-ready is tested in the spring?
Yes.
So it's his last spring?
It's his last spring, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Potts.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
For the report card information. Next item of business is 6.0 Action Items. Item 6.1 Approval for Batesburg-Leesville High School Beta Club students to attend a field trip to participate in the Beta Club Convention on February 6 through the 7th, 2026, in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, presented by Ms. Ergle and Mrs. Campbell, Batesburg-Leesville High School teachers and Beta Club advisors.
Good evening. We are here tonight to request approval to attend the South Carolina Senior Beta Club Convention. It's being held February 6 through 7th, 2026, at the Hilton Myrtle Beach in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. We have 40 students signed up for the convention this year. We hope to leave after school Thursday, February 5th, and return Sunday, February 8th. Our students will be competing in competitions throughout those two days to showcase their academic and artistic talents, as well as featuring the service learning projects our chapter has participated in throughout the past year.
Any questions for the advisors? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we grant approval for the Batesburg-Leesville High School Beta Club students to attend a field trip to participate in the Beta Club Convention on February 6 and 7, 2026, in Myrtle Beach, with Ms. Heather Ergle as the Batesburg-Leesville High School teacher and Beta Club advisor, and Leslie Campbell as the Batesburg-Leesville High School teacher and Beta Club advisor.
Do I have a second? I have a motion from Mrs. Carey and a second from Ms. Etheridge to approve the Batesburg-Leesville High School Beta Club students to attend a field trip to participate in the Beta Club Convention on February 6 through the 7th, 2026, in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, as presented by Ms. Ergle and Mrs. Campbell, Batesburg-Leesville High School teachers and Beta Club advisors. Any discussion? Here and none. The question is to approve the Batesburg-Leesville High School Beta Club students to attend a field trip to participate in the Beta Club Convention on February 6 through the 7th, 2026, in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, as presented by Ms. Ergle and Mrs. Campbell, Batesburg-Leesville High School teachers and Beta Club advisors. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, and we hope you have a great trip, and I know our students will do well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, item 6.2 Approval for Batesburg-Leesville High School and Batesburg-Leesville Middle School Chorus Students to attend a field trip to participate in the 2026 ACDA Honor Choir at Coastal Carolina University on January 23rd through the 24th, 2026, in Conway, South Carolina, presented by Ms. Felder, Batesburg-Leesville High School Choral Director, and Ms. Reagan, Batesburg-Leesville Middle School Choral Director.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Board of Trustees and our Superintendent. It is indeed an honor for our students to be a part of this. They auditioned in September. We had one student make it last year at the high school level, and this year, we had five. So we have made great gain with that, and I am so excited to be a part of this district and helping it grow with its choral program. And I am excited to say that we went, when we went to Newberry, to the region choir, the students that were selected for ACDA have been offered $68,000 apiece. This is for four years of college. They do not have to major in music. But because they made this prestigious choir by auditioning and making it, they've already been offered, that's by one school. So between those five kids, that's already $350,000. And so, you know, that's one of the goals that I have for our students. I had two children in college. So to see these parents, to be able to have some, those students to have options is a really great honor. So they're going to get to participate at Coastal Carolina University. I actually went there, so I'm very excited to show them. Where I attended, I did get the USC degree, though. It was that year of transition. But it's going to be very exciting for me to take these students. And so I'm very excited also because Ms. Reagan is, you know, she is having her students audition, and she, of course, had some of her students make it, too. So it's just going to be really great for our district for, you know, we're already doing so many great things in athletics, and we heard academically, but now we're hearing about it in the arts as well. So I hope that you will approve this trip for our students in January. Thank you.
Any questions for the choral directors?
I'm sorry. Good evening. I would just like to say that we have not had any students in recent years make ACDA, but at the middle school level, we have two this year. So we are so excited to finally have some representation from the middle school division at this ACDA Honor Choir as well.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve BLHS and BLMS chorus students to attend the field trip to participate in the 2026 ACDA Honor Choral, Honor Choir at Coastal Carolina University, January 23rd and 24th, in Conway, as presented.
I have a motion from Mr. Kaufman and a second from Mrs. Burgess to approve the Batesburg-Leesville High School and Batesburg-Leesville Middle School Chorus Students to attend a field trip to participate in the 2026 ACDA Honor Choir at Coastal Carolina University on January 23rd through the 24th, 2026, in Conway, South Carolina, as presented. Any discussion? Here and none. The question is to approve the Batesburg-Leesville High School and Batesburg-Leesville Middle School Chorus Students to attend a field trip to participate in the 2026 ACDA Honor Choir at Coastal Carolina University on January 23rd through the 24th, 2026, in Conway, South Carolina, as presented. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Dr. Atkinson?
I just wanted to make one comment. Last year, at the Christmas Choral Concert, there was a joint for the middle school and the high school. My best calculations, I counted 130 students on the stage. They were moving parts, so I might have missed a few. But it wasn't too many years ago that that was in, our program was in single digits. So just thank you for the growth that our chorus program has encountered for the last year.
Thank you so much, and we know our students will have a wonderful experience. Thank Next, we will group item 6.3 Second Reading Approval of Policy KF, Public Use of the Lexington III Fine Arts Center. Item 6.4 Second Read and Approval of Policy Administrative Rule KF-R, Public Use of the Lexington III Fine Arts Center. And item 6.5 Second Read and Approval of File KF-E, Public Use of the Lexington III Fine Arts Center. Files KF-E1 through KF-E8, presented by Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am bringing back tonight for second reading approval our policies and administrative rules and files that deal with the rental of our Fine Arts Center. I would like to point out that eight policy files were brought forth during first reading approval, but after removing several unnecessary files and some duplicates that were recommended for deletion, the remaining files were renumbered for clarity. And as a result, there are now four files instead of eight that we are bringing forth tonight.
Any questions for Mrs. Taylor? Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We give Second Reading Approval to Policy KF, Administrative Rule KF through R, File KF through E, File KF through E1 and 2, File KF through E3, and File KFE4, as presented by our administration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion for Mrs. Carey and a second for Mrs. Derrick for Second Reading Approval to Policy KF, Administrative Rule KF-R, File KF-E1, File KF-E2, File KF-3, E3, and File KFE4, as presented by the administration. Any discussion? Here and none. The question is to give Second Reading Approval to Policy KF, Administrative Rule KF-R, File KF-E1, File KF-E2, File KF-E3, and File KF-E4, as presented by the administration. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next, we will group items 6.6 through 6.11, Second Reading Approval of Policy GBC, Staff Compensation, Policy GCB, Professional Staff Contracts and Compensation, Policy GCC, Employee Leaves and Absences, Policy Administrative Rule GCC, Employee Leaves and Absences, Policy Administrative Rule GCC, GDC-R2, COVID-19 Related Leave, Employee Leaves and Absences, and File GCC-E, Employee Rights and Responsibilities Under the Family and Medical Leave Act, FMLA, presented by Dr. Bryant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate your willingness to group all these together. They are so intertwined and so similar, and there have been no changes since first reading.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Bryant? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion for Second Reading Approval of Policy GBC, Staff Compensation, Second Reading Approval of Policy GCB, Professional Staff Contracts and Compensation, Policy GCC, Employee Leaves and Absences, Policy ARGCC, excuse me, Employee Leaves and Absences, Policy ARGCC/GDC-R2, COVID-19 Related Leave, File GCC-E, Employee Rights and Responsibilities Under the Family, excuse me, and Medical Leave Act.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion for Mrs. Derrick and a second for Mrs. Burgess for Second Reading Approval to Policy GBC, Staff Compensation, Policy GCB, Professional Staff Contracts and Compensation, Policy GCC, Employee Leaves and Absences, Policy Administrative Rule GCC, Employee Leaves and Absences, Policy Administrative Rule GCC, GDC-R2, COVID-19 Related Leave, Employee Leaves and Absences, and File GCC-E, Employee Rights and Responsibilities Under the Family and Medical Leave Act, FMLA. Any discussion? Here and none. The question is to give Second Reading Approval to Policy GBC, Staff Compensation, Policy GCB, Professional Staff Contracts and Compensation, Policy GCC, Employee Leaves and Absences, Policy Administrative Rule GCC, Employee Leaves and Absences, Policy Administrative Rule GCC, GDC-R2, COVID-19 Related Leave, Employee Leaves and Absences, and File GCC-E, Employee Rights and Responsibilities Under the Family and Medical Leave Act, FMLA. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Next on the agenda is 7.0, Executive Session. Item 7.1, Discussion of Personnel Legal and Contractual Matters. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion. We go into Executive Session for a discussion of personnel legal and contractual matters.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion for Mrs. Burgess and a second for Mrs. Derrick to go into Executive Session for a discussion of personnel legal and contractual matters. All those in favor of the motion to go into Executive Session for the discussion of personnel legal and contractual matters, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. We are now in Executive Session.
Without objection, we are returning from executive session to public session eight point zero on the agenda. We are now in public session.
Baron Chair, make a motion to accept the administration's recommendation to offer coaching supplemental agreements as stated on page one for the school year 2025 and 2026.
Do I have a second? I have a motion for Mrs. Burgess and a second for Mrs. Derrick to accept the administration's recommendation to offer coaching supplemental agreements as stated on page one for the school year 2025 through 2026. Any discussion? Here and now, the question is the approval of the motion to accept the administration's recommendation to offer coaching supplemental agreements as stated on page one for the school year 2025 through 2026. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is nine point zero adjourned. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? We have a motion for Ms. Etheridge and a second for Mr. Kaufman to adjourn. Those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Meeting adjourned.